Everybody ready? Welcome to the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting for May 6, 2020. We continue to have these meetings via Zoom so we can practice social distancing. Thank you for those who are joining us. A few reminders about how we run our meetings during this time. If visual aids are used during the meeting, presenter will share the screen or call. Participants will not be able to view the slides without a computer, smartphone, or tap. All participants will be entered into the meeting with their audio muted, meaning the commission and the public will not be able to hear you. Presenters will be unmuted when their agenda comes up. And we ask that all online presenters use good conference call etiquette and mute their line when not speaking. Also, please introduce yourself each time you speak. If you do have a public comment on an agenda item or under the regular public comment, please use the raise your hand function on Zoom. Staff will call on you and unmute you. Pressed speakers give their full name and address, an address for the minutes. The county reserves the right to shut off the microphone and remove any speaker from the meeting if they are vulgar, rude, or inappropriate. Just to let you know, the chat function has been disabled and a recording of this meeting will be available on our website after the meeting. All right. So our first item of business is a proclamation. I'm gonna start with that. Commissioner Thelman, Commissioner DeRusso, do you just want me to go ahead with the proclamation or, okay? This is for National Preservation Month, May 2020 for Douglas County, Kansas. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for economic development, sustainable development, tourism promotion, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride and maintaining community character, why enhancing livability. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contribution made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that have shaped us as a people. And whereas Douglas County, Kansas, has recognized the importance of cultural resource protection by establishing the Heritage Conservation Council of Douglas County, the Natural and Cultural Heritage Program, the Historic Resource Survey Plan, providing education opportunities for the public, and piloting a collaborative grant program for historic barn assessments with the Kansas Barn Alliance. And whereas Douglas County, Kansas announces the Douglas County Interactive Cemetery Map, developed by the Douglas County GIS Division in cooperation with the Clerk's Office and the Heritage Office for general public use. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County, Kansas here right claim May 2020 as National Preservation Month and Douglas County adopted this May 6, 2020. This time, I'd like to ask everybody to come up for a picture. Now, we're gonna pass on the picture. Not, not possible. Sorry. Maybe a bad joke. We'll continue on with our consent agenda. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 items on the consent agenda. Does any member of the commission have an item they would like to remove from the consent agenda?
I do not.
No.
Okay. Does any member of the public have an item they'd like to remove from the consent agenda? And on these, I'll check with Sarah each time as she's at the courthouse to tell us if any member of the public is at the courthouse.
We have no one here today.
Thank you, Sarah. And I'll check with Jill to see if any of our attendees online.
Nope.
No, thank you. So with that, do I have a motion to approve consent agenda items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11?
Commissioner DeRusso, I move to approve.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. We'll move on to our regular agenda items. We have two regular agenda items tonight. The first is to consider an appeal of an administrative denial of certificate of survey, CSU 2000 0005 at North 1800 Road and East 1200 Road. And I believe Mary is Mary Miller here on this one. There's Mary.
Good evening. Mary Miller, planner, and I'll pull up my PowerPoint here and go through this to see. How do I share the screen? I'm sorry to be so dumb. How do I? Mary, you should be, if you have it up on your screen, you should have the rights to hit that share screen button at the bottom. Okay, let me see. I think I messed up. Dear. On your, on your Zoom panel? At the very bottom, there should be a green bu- button that's lit up green in the middle that says share screen.
Yeah. Kind of hover over it, Mary. You need to hover over it. So if you take your cursor down to the bottom of your screen and sort of hover above, above it, you, it'll pop up and it should say share screen.
You know, I had everybody and now I only have you, just a little box with you. I wonder what happened.
Just keep going down to the bottom and see if you can find that share screen button.
No, somehow I, let me see if I hid something behind something. Got you. I'll see if I can pull it up on the agenda. I tried to. I don't usually have this happen. I had, I could see everybody on Zoom and now I just see the person who's talking. That's big. Oh, wait. All right. My problem's over. Not the only one, Nancy. Okay, so. Do you see that share screen button? Let me get back to it because I have my thing up now. Okay, now. Share screen. Then it should.
Here we go. Okay, great.
There you go.
Fine, thank you.
Okay, as you mentioned, this is an appeal from the administrative denial of certificate of survey 20-00005 for property in the northwest corner of the intersection of North 1800 and East 1200 Roads. So this shows the general location. There is a house in the very bottom right corner. That area has been divided off with a homestead exemption survey. It's about five acres, but the remainder of it is what was in the certificate of survey. This graphic is the proposed certificate of survey. There are still changes that need to be made. As we went through the process, progress of reviewing this, we sent comments to the applicant and there were several changes that needed to be made. However, he was aware that we were going to recommend denial. So he elected for us to put the review on hold and then move forward with the appeal. So if the appeal is upheld today, we would have to go back and complete the review of the certificate of survey. You know, these RDPs may not be configured this way. There may be changes to various items on this certificate of survey. We only went through the first round of review comments. So this is just kind of like a concept plan. Things will probably change if the appeal is upheld. So when we do a certificate of survey, and theirs was submitted prior to the changes to our zoning regulations. Today, you would first start out with the rezoning, but these were submitted prior to those changes. So basically, we looked at the subdivision regulations and if they complied with the standards in the subregs and if they conformed to the comprehensive plan, then it would be administratively approved. So as I mentioned, we're still in the middle of the review about whether they comply with the subregs. Changes might be needed, but we did not feel they conformed to the comprehensive plan due to the fact that the use, the residential use is not a recommended use in the adopted area plan. That is the K10 and Farmers Turnpike Plan. Oops. And so this is a graphic that shows the land use recommendations in this area. The subject property is marked with a star. And so you can see the floodplain and the surrounding area. The primary recommendation right there is open space. The subject property is recommended for office research. Low density residential is recommended to the west of the floodplain stream corridor. And then we have high density recommendation to the south of that. And south of the subject property is recommended for neighborhood commercial and higher intensity industrial. So the office research is not a specific use. It's just a land use, kind of a category that's shown on the plan. And in the text of the long range plan, it gives you what uses they recommend for that. I keep thinking you need to do that. So these are the uses that are recommended in the office research use category. Professional offices, research services, manufacturing and production, whether limited or technology, and light wholesale storage and distribution. So since residential uses were not one of the recommended uses, that's the reason that the certificate of survey was denied. The subdivision regulations prior to our revisions contained an appeal from the administrative determination to the Board of County Commissioners, which is why we're here tonight. Planning did provide notice of the appeal to the neighbors. And the subregs note that the appellant or appellant shall have the burden of establishing by clear and convincing evidence that the planning director's decision was incorrect. And so he's here to make a presentation today. This is a short background on the application. Some of this was in the memo, but we started out with a pre-application meeting and he informed us that he was interested in dividing the land for residential purposes. And let him know that didn't comply with the recommendations in the long range plan. It suggested there'd be a couple options. We couldn't guarantee the outcome, but he could always request a revision to the long range plan to change the future land use recommendation for that location or submit an application for a use in conformance with that plan. And he submitted a conditional use permit for mini storage. That was submitted. It went to the planning commission. There's quite a bit of public discussion. There was concern about the character of the neighborhood, that the mini storage may not be compatible with the residential character of the neighborhood. The planning commission voted five to five, direct with approval. They then made a motion to recommend denial and that was also a five to five vote. So it came to the county commission without a recommendation. A valid protest petition was filed and the county commission denied that on July 17. And so as I mentioned, the certificate of survey is still in the review process. If the Board of County Commissioners vote to uphold the appeal, the certificate of survey would return to planning and then we would complete the review and approval process. And so that concludes my presentation. And I believe the property owner is here. Is there a way I take this away now?
Mary, you just need to stop sharing your screen. Go all the way down to the bottom. There should be a red button down there. Sometimes hard to see.
Yep, there it is. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so I believe the applicant is here. Mr. Finello?
I am here.
You have a chance to address the commission?
I do. I'm just gonna read off my notes here, but the last time we met was July 17th of last year, 2019, was when we last talked about the storage units and all three commissioners denied and came back to find a more fitting use for the land. So I've been working with Mary, like she said, for the last couple of months, trying to come to a happy compromise for everyone involved. But like I said, you, you guys, the commissioner said the storage units didn't fit the area based on the four conditions. That was previously stated in the write-off on it. This plan, in my opinion, meets all four of the conditions that you guys talked about. Suitability of the site. Basically, there'll be 28 acres with five lot, five buildable lots on it. The area already has a house on it as Mary had presented. None of the lots are in the 100-year floodplain, which is very important too, so we don't disrupt the land in order to cause any excess runoff and such. The, I've talked to the rural water district. They said they could meet all of the needs of the five properties. The electrical is there as well, and then septic is house individual. So let's see here. Also, in the slide that Mary showed of the layout of it, there is one central driveway or one central road for it, I guess, for the five lots, which, in my opinion, was less invasive to the land versus having each individual lot have their own drive. So the one central driveway, which was important. The houses fit the character of the area. There's many other houses in the areas back there. See here. As well as the houses, I know there was a lot of neighbors complaints about the storages that we had originally brought up. And the happy medium was some kind of rural residential setting. So I feel this to be a happy medium between commissioners and I and the neighbors that had protested the storage units before. So if you guys have any questions for me specifically, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. You may have some questions. Commissioners, any questions for Mary or the applicant?
I have a question. Mr. Finello, I just wanted to follow up. Remind me, I know you had originally planned, I think, to have wanted to be able to build one extra house there, right? So there were gonna be two homes there.
Are we talking before the storage unit process?
Yes, originally.
That was the original tent. Yes, was, we were going to, me and a friend were gonna split and build two houses on there, yes.
Okay, and then when you were told you couldn't do that, you made other.
I, I met up with Mary and they said, these are the uses of the land. And they said, basically, you know, try and find something that can fit the use of the land, which was, what was it, office and research? And there was storage which fed, which met the future land use of it, which, you know, was denied by you guys as of July. And so.
Okay, so did you buy another house or?
Correct.
So how did you get from two houses to five? Are you planning on one of these houses being yours or?
Unfortunately, now I have, you know, some time and money wrapped up in these processes of surveying, of engineering, and all the stuff. And so now I'm just trying to basically make some houses out there. And I know it's a very popular area too. So I'm just trying to recoup the money that I've, you know, wasted. I'm trying to get to this point right now.
Okay, thank you.
Mary, I have a question about some of the language in the packets describing the current certificate of survey where it looks like there's some question whether the floodplain boundaries are correctly identified or represented. So it sounds like you've, you've said that there's a lot of work to do on the survey to.
Right, usually when we get a survey, yeah, we usually send comments. We get revisions. Sometimes we send comments again. There's a lot of back and forth. And we only sent comments. We didn't get any revisions back. And the zoning and codes office asked that they confirm the floodplain boundary. They didn't feel that it was shown correctly. So that was one of the comments. And that's one of the changes we'd expect to see is for them to confirm that that boundary is right.
So I guess, so that's, I guess that's my question in that that is a really floody, complicated area of the county. And if there's a question about where the floodplain boundaries are, might actually decrease the number of parcels that could be built on if there's a significant floodplain boundary discrepancy. And the other question, I mean, honestly, that tiny print is hard for me to see, but. So the 100, 100-year floodplain is identified on the survey, but is the 500-year floodplain identified anywhere? Because we've had a couple of those in recent times.
Yeah, this is Mary.
Devastating.
And it's possible that the parcels may need to be reconfigured. They may need to be reduced, you know, if the floodplain boundary is shown incorrectly. So as I mentioned in the presentation, they're not guaranteed this number of RDPs for this configuration. It's just got to go through the process. So I just want to make it sure that everyone knew that that certificate of survey was not being approved if the appeals upheld. It still has to go through the process. And the 500-year floodplain isn't shown. It's not regulated right now. We always show it on our maps, kind of as a planning tool for property owners and for us as well. But there are no regulations about it, so it's not shown. We only show the regulatory floodplain.
Okay. I guess that would be, it's a little, it's, it's concerning though, given the the nature of that particular area to, you know, to think about, so where we might not really understand the full flooding potential of that of that land for, for resident, you know, for, you know, development. So I understand that the cert, the certificate would be worked on. But I guess I, without knowing kind of whether we have a certificate that's pretty close to what is accurate versus one that is really diminishes prospects of, you know, that, that amount of development. I don't, I just, I guess I'd like to, I don't know, Tanya or Chad, you all are the ones who had some thoughts on, or have some of the expertise in, in the flooding and all of that. Could you add what your concerns or what your thoughts are?
And while they're turning on their microphones, we did receive communication from the Cow Valley Drainage District, and I'm not seeing it in the packet. So I can, I thought we added it to the packet, but I'm not seeing it online. So Tanya and Chad, you may need to kind of explain all of that.
I saw it in the packet earlier.
I, I did.
Yeah.
It's there. The floodplain mapping there, Nancy, is actually pretty recent, pretty accurate for Baldwin Creek. I think I might even share my screen here. Let me know if you.
I think Jill has to let you do that. Hold on.
You should be good, Chad.
All right, can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the statewide floodplain mapping page. And you can see that this is a detailed study, so it has elevation shown. It has the floodway defined. And based on the way that that floodplain limit is pretty jaggedy and jumps around, that's modern mapping that's based on LiDAR as opposed to the old paper maps. And then if you zoom out, you can see that the impacts of the Kansas River are further to the north there. So just in the context of this development, this area right here is pretty good mapping. So, you know, you mentioned the 500-year events and, and worrying about extreme flooding and whether this is accurate. I would say this is pretty good. What Tanya noticed was that on the development plan, it didn't have that same kind of meandering line to it. And it looked to be not in the same location. So I think once we overlay this line on the development plan, a couple of those lots might need to bump a little bit so that that blue area, which is the floodplain, is not part of those lots and it's part of that set aside area. So I'm gonna go ahead and unshare here.
So, so Chad, you're, your, your opinion then is that the the ability to develop five, that five parcel layout is essentially doable. I mean, what you see is a floodplain that's represented fairly close to what the new mapping would show.
Yeah, Tanya actually did some work to try to follow the surveyor's line. And it just needs to bump like on the certificate of survey, it needs to bump like 15% over from what it's being shown. So I think that would impact those lots a little bit.
And a lot of those RDPs are showing, so RDP showing 3.06 acres. Sorry, that's RDP 2, RDP 3 showing 3.04, RDP 4 showing 3.39. These all require at least three acres outside of the floodplain. And so RDP 2 and 3, I think, will be touched by the floodplain. If those are not able, no, 2 and 3 will be touched by the floodplain. They may have to be combined. And so then that would actually reduce that one lot. And then RDP 4, I do think it touches the very upper northwest corner, but it's just a tiny bit. And so that may still have three acres when they remove the floodplain from that one. So I do think the floodplain is going to impact the number of lots and that that may be reduced once that's been remapped.
Thank you.
There, you mentioned the letter from the Drainage District and what they were asking, and they've, they've brought this up in the past with other developments, most significantly Rock Chalk Park. But what they were asking is that with this development, that the applicant provide a study and implement stormwater management that would be a zero impact level of runoff control, meaning basically hold everything that, that falls on the site. Because what zero impact means is make it so that the downstream receiving system doesn't see any changes. That's a very extreme standard and it's something that's done in urban areas. It's done in areas of the country where we have really super high value water resources like Wild Inseanic rivers or, you know, up in Minnesota with lakes. And, you know, when you put a whole neighborhood right on a lake that people want to water ski on, you have to have different standards. So this, this request would be pretty extreme for our area of the country. And that would be even if this was another distribution center or manufacturing facility. So the fact that it's a large lot residential development kind of takes it way into another category. And I wouldn't see that as a benefit here. Specifically detention would not be a benefit here because this is very low in the watershed. And basically, you'd rather see this runoff move on out of the way before the watershed upstream actually gets down to this area of Baldwin Creek. So the best thing that we have going here is the fact that that floodplain is there and it's mapped and that our code requires it to be set aside, which creates kind of a buffer between these residential lots and whatever it is they've got going on and that stream channel. All of the runoff from those houses will go through that buffer area before going in the stream. So I think in terms of protecting the stream, we already are at the point where they would be doing as much as we should be asking.
And from the residential building permit side, Nancy, you know, you mentioned that we've seen some really extreme 500-year floods in the last couple of years. And that's true. And I think what we would try to do on our end from the building permit perspective is we would want to see the 500-year on that, on that certificate of survey if we could so that any property owner who's buying would know where the 100-year is, which would all be in the future development area. But they would also know and be aware when they're buying a piece of property that they're buying a piece of property in a 500-year floodplain. And then we would work individually with each of those property owners. We can't require them to elevate or to not put in a basement, but we definitely are very comfortable sitting down one-on-one. We have base flood elevation information and providing them the best options for them and what's going to keep them the safest and hoping that they will take that information and make the best decision for their investment of their, you know, property and their residence and, and life safety. residence and, and, and life safety issues that they would hopefully be willing to still elevate in a 500 year floodplain.
Not sure who to address this question to, and maybe Chad and maybe Tanya, but can you talk a little bit? We've had discussions about private roads. And this plan has a private road. Can you talk a little bit about what the counties experiences with private roads?
I'll let Mary tag on to what I'm going to say because this is so interesting. So um, and I think it was 1998, we banned private roads. Prior to that, we were issuing, uh, access via private roads to residences in the county. That posed quite a problem when properties started to sell and people started to shift their boundary lines that it was actually cutting people off from their own property. And then they were trying to cross two or three sometimes other property owners to get back to their house. So we prohibited, um, any future private drives for residential access. So if someone wants to pull a building permit, um, after 1998, they, they're not able to do that on a private road. It's a little bit different. Um, this is called a cross access easement, which is essentially a private road. Even though we've prohibited private roads, it's only allowed in the urban growth area and it, it is not maintained by the county. The different property owners are shared maintenance of taking care of potholes and taking care of that road. The county crews do not remove snow or anything off of those roads. In the new regulations, which this didn't fall under, if you're creating more than four RDPs, you have to plat and create a public road. So we are really trying to shift away from private road, whether that, those were abolished outside the urban growth area long ago, but it's, these cross access easements are still allowed within cluster developments in the urban growth area. And I can let Mary talk a little bit more about that part.
I think you covered everything, Tanya. And you know, we try not to call them private roads because they're not allowed. They're cross access easements. They do have to dedicate a 60 foot wide easement. And that would convert to right of way when it gets annexed into the city. And they are required to build to county rock road standards where the private roads in the past weren't. They were just built, however. So in the cross access easement maintenance agreement, there's, Keith always gives them a requirement how wide it has to be. And then notes they have to be built to the county standards. And so that's one way of ensuring their, their quality roads. But the maintenance is up to the property owners and they spell that out in that cross access easement and maintenance agreement, just how that maintenance is going to work.
Okay. So that, that is one of my concerns. That is spelled out somewhere for the, the person that's purchasing the property because we've had problems in the past where all of a sudden people are sitting there and they're in their house and there's 12 inches of snow. And they're upset because the county doesn't maintain it, the township doesn't maintain it. And they say that they were never told about it. So that will be covered with them now.
It always is. On the certificate of survey, it calls it a cross access easement. It tells them where to find the agreement and in the agreement, it spells it out. So we never speak to the future purchasers, maybe when they get building permits or maybe then they could, it could be explained to them more clearly that remember you're responsible for maintaining this, but at the time that the certificate of survey is being created, we don't even know who the future buyers are going to be. And I don't know on the note saying this is a cross access easement, perhaps we could just put in parentheses to be privately maintained. I don't know if people would read that, but we could add that. That might be one way to help clarify it.
Yeah. So part of the dilemma is that, um, they, the property owners or the buyers don't always do all their research ahead of time. Often some people will reach out to us and we always tell them this is on a cross assets, cross access easement. It's not maintained by the county. You're responsible for your own maintenance. That's only if they reach out and they do their homework ahead of time. So buyer beware sometimes. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mary, Tanya, Chad, or Anthony?
So I guess the question before us is for this appeal to go through, um, for us to grant the appeal, that is to say that the applicant proved that the planning director was incorrect in saying that this proposal, um, didn't fit the K-10 farmer sector plan, the Plan 2040. But technically that's the correct judgment because this use is not found inside that zoning category that is part of our plans. So I guess my question is, oh, well, I don't know what you all want to do if you want to allow this residential use or not, but I guess my question is do, can we find the planning director technically incorrect if that use is not actually part of that zone that is in our comprehensive plan? Is our, is our real choice to have the comprehensive plan, have an amendment put forward before this can actually be correctly considered? Silence.
I guess that was my interpretation is that we had a couple of options here. One, we could judge that the planning, the planning director was in error, as you said, Nancy, that, that, another was we could ask for a text amendment for, um, relooking at that area. Seems like there was one more other option I can look at in our notes here in the packet. It seems like there was one other option.
Mary, could you run through those for them?
I think the options were to amend the long range plan, um, to approve the appeal or else to develop it with a use that is in the long range plan.
That's the one I forgot was actually developing in a way that it's actually zoned for. I guess I probably should take public comment now before we start jumping into discussion about it. Um, any other questions though, before we do that? Okay. Sarah checking in at the courthouse.
I've got no public comment here.
Thank you. Jill?
Yes, Larry Bartz. Um, I've allowed him to talk, so there you go.
Hey, yeah, my name's Larry Bartz and I live just north of the property in question. You know, when we talked about this originally, it was, um, they wanted to do two houses and, and you know, I, I got no problem with that. But now all of a sudden it's becoming a development. And I mean, if they wanted to put two houses on it, I wouldn't have any argument at all. But, um, you know, they're trying to make a whole development. It's going to cause a lot of problems for us down here. So, um, I, I just, I don't know. I, I mean, I hate to, I hate to have these guys, you know, buy this property and then not be able to do anything with it. But on the other hand, they should have done their due diligence upfront and made sure they knew what they could do there and what they couldn't do there. So anyway, that's really all the comments I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate it. Congratulations for being our first public commenter on our Zoom meetings. Jill will provide you with the certificate. Not observed, but no, no stop what we're giving out. Um, so, uh, Anthony, you have an opportunity now to respond to any public comment that you heard.
Commissioner Kelly, we also have another person that has raised their hand. If you, you want to go to that first.
Yeah, let's do that first. Sorry, Mr. Fennella will get there.
That's all right.
All I see is the first name is Lyric. You're allowed to talk at this point.
Hello?
Yep, we hear you.
I'm not hearing any kind of feedback, so I don't know if you can hear me or not.
We can hear you.
Is that a yes?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm Lyric Bartz and yes, I'm just in a different room than my husband. But, um, one of my biggest concerns is the flooding. The flooding down here has gotten worse as more houses go in. And it's not the responsibility of every one of those owners. It's the responsibility of those planning it. Because people don't do the due diligence before purchasing property. They get excited, they see what the potential is and they go for it. And I think we're walking people into a problem. First of all, they're going to be on a private road and no one is in, on three acres is really going to have the equipment to maintain that. If the city at eventually, or county, excuse me, county or township decides they are going to maintain the road, then they're going to have to bring it up to code before they'll even do that. And then you've got the situation with the flooding that I referred to at first. That, um, the houses that are further on down past us, this year, they spent probably six weeks with their furniture up on their second floor, waiting to see if the flooding was going to hit them or not. Because they got it one other time and without much warning. And those people had to move out of their houses for months. And if we allow this natural drainage to, um, be interfered with, then that's putting those people at even more potential. And this, a lot of this natural drainage that you refer to was actually my private property. So it's also making it unusable the majority of the year. Because it takes a long time for it to dry out. It's, I think it is 1,200 homes that, um, drain through the deer field area that come down through this property. And there's almost a hundred years of roots of a broom field in there that are helping slow it down and help it drain. I've lost six feet off of my bank on the creek that's moving closer and closer to my barn. And it's because the more houses you put in there, the less of the grass that it has to absorb, the faster that creek goes. I have footage that I'd be happy to share with you, well, it shows that, that creek at 12 foot high instead of the little dribble that it is right now. A couple of days ago, it was, it wasn't at 12 foot, but it was at four. And I just think we're asking for trouble for the future. It might be a nice thought with people right now, but I, what's your future plans for it when you've got homeowners that are getting flooded out and don't have access? Because like you say, somebody sells their property and they decide they're not going to share their portion of it. And cross easement is kind of splitting hairs with private road, if you ask me. It's getting pretty close and since what, 1998, it's been against the Douglas County codes. So yeah, I have, I have some real reservations on it. Um, I'm sorry that this is not a profitable situation for this young man, but that's not my responsibility. It was his. And I'm sorry if that sounds harsh, but got to do your homework before you make big purchases. I'm done.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate that. Any other public comment? Jill, Sarah?
I'm not seeing any right now.
So open it back up to Mr. Fennella if you'd like to respond to any of those concerns or comments.
Yeah, I just wrote, jot it down a couple of notes as they were talking, but um, and you know, the 28 acres that is sitting there, you know, I don't, I mean, in my eyes, the five houses based upon 28 acres doesn't seem, um, that invasive to the land, I guess you'd say. I mean, you talked about a development, but I don't, I don't really see it as that. They also stated something about following, should have done the homework on what the city and county says about that. You know, I tried following it with the storage unit permit, you know, because the future use does say it is storage. We were denied. Um, and then Mrs. Bartz had said something about the floodway. I think Chad and Tanya did a pretty good job of addressing that. I mean, I'm more than happy to work with whoever to ensure that the floodways aren't anywhere, you know, make sure that there is three acres that are outside of it, you know? I'm not trying to make a problem for people down the road, you know, but the Barts are, I mean, they, they're built on the northwest corner up there and I'm sure they do have some flooding um, that goes through their property, but I don't know if I answered everyone's concerns, but I just tried to jot down as much as I could as they were speaking.
Thank you. Okay, we'll bring it to our commissioners to have a discussion, motions and votes on this item. Maybe I'll, I'll kick it off just a little bit. I'm, I'm sort of, I have concerns. I think Commissioner DeRusso started down the road of where some of my concerns are of jumping from what seemed like a small, you know, one or two houses on this property to five. That's what struck me then when I opened up the packet to read about this and you know, we've had a lot of discussions about rural subdivisions and, and development and how that jives with Plan 2040 and so that, that just raised some, some concerns for me. Also, I, I was concerned about the private, you know, I know it's, what do we call it? Self dividing the, whatever, whatever we call that, I can't get the name right, but I just have a concern about making sure we can continue to maintain those roads. And I think Commissioner DeRusso sort of was asking some questions about that, but those are my questions really. It seemed to me, listening to Chad and Tanya about the, the flood issues may be able to be addressed. But, um, the other two, I, I just have reservations about. I'm interested to hear my fellow commissioners' thoughts.
I know when we originally talked about this, yeah, we had some concerns about, well, part of it was flooding and that was by putting in storage units and, and all this that we knew there was going to be a lot of runoff. And then how that fit in the neighborhood. Because, you know, 2040 hadn't been adopted yet. And even in 2040, this is, this is an area that's not even set to be annexed during that, that period for the next 20 years at least. You know, we also talked about kind of what we've touched on already is communication with, with property owners. I mean, no property owner out there. The folks on the, it would be the southeast corner had no idea that the future use of their property is industrial. At, you know, at this time, they have no intentions of, of moving. So we're, we're, you know, it's part of the concern was looking at, at the rural character of that area and saying, hey, we're, let's put in a storage unit or let's put in an office building. And I, I just think we need to look at amending that, that long-term plan because that's, that's not the character of that area now. And, and honestly, I don't see it being the character of that area even in 20 years. So I was a little shocked to see it go from two to five houses. And you know, maybe it'll only be three or four. Once we look at the floodplains and how that's going to play out with, uh, with making sure that everybody has at least three acres. I have to say at least the residential fits that character of that area much better than, than industrial and, and office and storage space and. And I, I said, I, I too was kind of shocked to see it go to five, five houses.
So I, oh, I'm sorry, Michelle, were you finished?
Yes.
So same here, it seems like we went from us, you know, one or two homes to a full-on housing development, even though it's five, you know, cluster development in five homes. It's, it's a, it's a major change for, for that parcel and for the neighborhood. I guess my, again, not knowing how you guys want to go on this, if we were to accept the compromise that housing is what the parcel should have rather than sitting, you know, if the owner is not willing to have it as agricultural and is not going to be able to put in warehousing, boat storage, whatever. I guess my question is, because this is more of a residential development rather than a single occupant, you know, a single residence or two, that seems to me like that, actually, my comfort level would be more asking for an amendment to the plan and having, would that cause the planning commission to actually evaluate the, the site, you know, the certificate and the whole process? So that these kind of questions we're asking actually get a thorough review rather than us kind of on the fly, kind of hoping that it all works out in the end. I guess my, that would be my sense that this, this is a big enough development that it probably deserves more of a, to actually fit the zoning that it would be located in, which then, to me, we get that through the amendment to the plan and then a planning commission process. Because I, I think technically, the planning director was correct. The zoning doesn't allow this use. But the zoning could be changed. And I agree with Michelle. I think that the, years ago, when that, when the K-10 Farmers Turnpike Sector Plan was adopted, and it was a long, hard process to get adopted, including the very, very long and difficult lawsuit, that was, there was a very different approach, particularly from the Chamber of Commerce and, and just an approach to industrial development and, and kind of large-scale industry and warehousing and, and setting out large parcels for a whole kind of industrial development, economic development that, that we barely follow now. You know, we're more about small business development. And so I guess I, I, I want, I would like to have a discussion about opening up the sector plan and reviewing whether it is appropriate for 20, 2020 now and see if it's time to make some adjustments so that it actually fits where we are now in the, in the next 20 years. Sorry, kind of rambling, but.
So one of the, something I want to see is that, you know, this has gone on for almost a year now, at least that, that we're aware of. I don't want to make this any more difficult, any more expensive, and drag it out any longer than we have to for the applicant. While five houses shocked me, it is in the urban growth area. I mean, this is going to be, at some point, you know, a Lawrence residential neighborhood. And I, I just think we, we got to quit doing this, this runaround and making things difficult, or people aren't going to want to come to Douglas County. We all agreed back in July that we thought that, you know, something was wrong. Not to point fingers and say that somebody was wrong, but that times had changed and that this was the wrong plan for that, that particular property. So yeah, I'd like to have the discussion of how we can remedy this and get the process moving one way or another for the applicant and not have to jump through two or three months' worth of decision processes, meetings, planning commission, you know, all, all the different bureaucratic processes that are involved in this. But, because we said last year that we thought residential was a better fit for that area. So now we have a residential plan. How do we, how do we move forward?
I'm with Michelle 100% on that. I, I, I feel bad for Mr. Finello, because I'm going to have a hard time voting that the planning director was wrong in their assessment of, of the certificate of survey. At the same time, I, I suppose it falls partially to blame on us, or maybe fully to blame on us, that we didn't ask for a text amendment right after we passed Plan 2040 for this piece of property. Because that's really the next step, I, in my mind, is that we take a look at this, not just this piece of property, but that, that sector plan and really review it. And so I'm disappointed that, that we didn't do that, because I think it's caused Mr. Finello to try to, you know, to appeal something that really, I think it's hard for us to, to work as what he was trying to meet us with, what he's able to do. The public can't actually ask for a text amendment. It has to come from the planning commission or the county commission in this case. So I, I think I'd ask the planning department to, you know, I'm not trying to point fingers. It's on us. We should have turned right around and done it. And I'd be happy to make that motion tonight for a text amendment on that part of that sector plan. Mary, you might have to give me some specific language to do that, so we know what we're asking for.
Okay, because it would be a comprehensive plan amendment, because it's in the comp plan. So rather than a text amendment, it'd be a comprehensive plan amendment and just to revise the K-10 and Farmers Turnpike Plan.
Because I do think, thank you, Mary, I appreciate that. I do think it's important also, as Commissioner Thelman said, there was a lot of talk about what was going on there, and I'm not sure our, our business community is tuned into this discussion when we're talking about a small piece of property that is currently zoned for, for commercial development. Are they, yeah, and our comprehensive plan might say something different, but we, we just have to have that discussion community-wide, not just on this, this one, this one parcel, so.
So can I, Patrick, can I ask for clarification on what you just asked? That you'll make a motion on, in a little while, it sounds like. Are you asking for, that the county commission is asking the planning department to open the sector plan up for a full review, a full public review? Or are you talking about just a review of this particular parcel?
We would, we would, we would need a comprehensive plan amendment is what we would need. Mary, give me a head nod if I got that right. I mean, it, it's not necessarily the entire sector plan, it's just a comprehensive plan amendment.
It's comprehensive plan amendment just to this area plan, and you could just change the land use recommendation for this corner? Or I think Nancy was asking, did you want to look at all the land use recommendations in that plan? You know, just what, what you want us to look at? Because when you initiate the, the amendment, it's good to have some direction, just what kind of changes you'd like to see.
So maybe that's, well, I think we're talking about two, two, one small thing. So the text amendment for this particular project. But the larger question being, is it time for us to take a good, long look at that, at that sector plan as a whole? Given that in, industrial development was a large driver, commercial and industrial development for that sector plan, which caused a lot of consternation in the rural property owners and, and you know, and now in, in some ways, it's not even, that area is not even viewed as, as really going to be developed in, in the near future, in the, in the life of this plan. So is it, is that sector plan really representative of where we are in that corner of the county these days? Where we are in terms of economic development and, and, you know, recruiting large-scale industry and that stuff? So I, I guess I'm asking, and maybe, maybe it deserves a longer discussion or a study session or something, but I'm, I wonder if it's time for us to ask to have another look at the entire sector plan, which I know is a big deal, but there's a lot going on in that corner of the county that has more to do with natural resources and agritourism and tourism in general and recreation floodplain concerns, so. I, I guess one way we.
Oh, sorry. No, I was just going to say, I, I would love to have a work session to maybe look at the entire sector plan. But in the meantime, I'd like to see how we can get this particular land use change for this parcel and get, get Mr. Finello moving, moving forward. Is there, I don't know, is there a way to say that we, I don't know, that we approve his plan based on the land, uh, land use change or what? Yeah, and I don't know, erase feelings, we haven't voted yet, but I'm sensing that we are some, somewhat supportive of getting this land use changed. And, and that we think that residential is a better use for that property. So Sarah, I, Sarah, Mary, how, how do we get there?
So if I could offer, I think we start by voting on the appeal. And, you know, do we either deny the appeal or accept the appeal? And then we can talk about that next step. I mean, that, that seems like the sequential order. I'm, I'm in agreement, we need to deal with this parcel first, so. And then I, I too think it'd be good to have a study session before we dive into the K-10 plan. Let's, let's figure out what we're diving into, what the timeframe is. But I, I don't, I don't want Mr. Finello to have to wait for a whole sector plan revision. I mean, that would take forever, that would take way too long. He's waited long enough on this. But I also, I don't feel very comfortable denying the planning director's opinion on this, because it, it does seem to align with how that property is zoned right now. So with that said, I mean, I can go ahead and make a motion unless we want, or, I mean, we can talk after I make a motion too, but you know, unless we want to talk a little bit more about that.
Well, I, I guess I want to know what happens if we say that we, and to me, it seems like a double negative. If we don't uphold the appeal, so basically, we're saying we approve or we agree with the planning director and not with the applicant. What is the next step for him and what does this process look like? I mean, is it going to be another year that this is going to take to get this done? Mary, Mary, go ahead.
I just had a question on the appeal, because if you don't uphold the appeal, then his certificate of surveys denied. It sounds like we kind of want to keep it active, so that if they go to the comp plan amendment, he doesn't have to submit everything all over again. So I don't know if you can defer, if there's some other vote you could take that would let his certificate of survey just be on hold pending the changes to the comp plan. That way, he still has an active application, so if the comp plan changes go through, we could just go ahead and continue, and, and maybe it wouldn't be denied.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Mary, if it were denied and he wanted to come back, he'd have to come back under the new regulations, and this essentially would be dead in the water. I mean, he would have to plat and dedicate a public road that's approved by the township. If this were denied, he would need to then start over in a way that meets the new regulations.
You're right. And if he could only have the four RDPs because of the floodplain, he could still use that private road, but it would be quite, put into a whole lot more process. So I think it'd be important just to put this application on hold rather than approving the denial of it, because that way, you know, we could relook at it based on the fact that the comp plan has changed. We can kind of just put it on hold.
Is there, Mary or Tanya, do you know, and I know Mr. Finello wants to say a few, something if he can, but do you know, do we have any timelines, though, in this new process of overseeing appeals for certificates of survey? I mean, is there some sort of timeline that we're required to meet?
No, there isn't. And actually, that appeal process no longer exists, so this is the last one you'll have. So right now, if you want to do a certificate of survey, you have to rezone, and instead of looking at appeals, you'll be looking at zonings. So that's a lot better, so this, there's no time for that.
Mr. Finello, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I was just trying to follow all your guys' lingo and everything, but I didn't know timeline-wise what you guys were, what are we looking at? Because it sounds like if you're having to amend the whole comprehensive plan that we're looking sometime out, is that correct? Or I'm just trying to, you know, put a timeline on it. Obviously, I'm sure you guys are sick of this issue, but I'm just trying to get, figure out, you know, are we looking a week out or what? I mean, that's just my, I just want some clarification on some timelines.
Amending the comprehensive plan is maybe not as daunting as it sounds. Yeah, I mean, that can actually go through. Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, that's not a, a huge process.
No, it's pretty similar to rezoning. If you initiate it, then we would work on it, and especially if you narrow it down just to that, that area, so we're not looking at everything. Basically, staff would review it, make a staff report, take it to the planning commission, and if they approve it, then it would just come to the county commission, and then we would do a resolution. So you are looking at a few months, but it's not like a year or anything.
And so Tanya brings up another issue that I think is starting to make my head hurt. We approved some new rules for certificates, certificates of survey. And if this one is falling under the old regulations, we're essentially saying we don't think those current regulations are necessary. And I, I don't know, it seems, I, I think those are important, especially when we're talking about rural subdivision here, you know, and, and a five, five resident, the five-home development. I, I think those neighbors may have something to say about five homes in that, in that space. But if we're trying to do some kind of compromise here, I suppose we could defer it and not apply those. But, I mean, I think there may be a conflicting value that the neighbors will bring up. Well, why did you, why did you pass the other regulations, so?
Yeah, the subregs, they have that transitional provision, so if you submit something beforehand, you know, it, it gets to carry forward. That way, people aren't being surprised in the middle of an application. Now, if you, if you decided just to not uphold the appeal and it faded away, then everything would come in, there'd be a rezoning. Surprised in the middle of an application. Now, if you, if you decided just to not uphold the appeal and it faded away, then everything would come in, there'd be a rezoning. And go through the whole process following the comprehensive plan amendment and. You know, th- those are the two avenues you have.
So, do, I guess we have the option to defer. And he can keep the current certificate request that he has, and that would put him in the old. Regulations, we could deny, and then if he wanted to do. The plan he has now, he would have to go through a whole different process, and Tanya, you might explain that, or Mary, explain that. For Mr. Fennello, so he can know what that process looks like. Those. I'm not hearing from the commission any interest in in approving the appeal. So, Tanya, or Mary, do you want to talk about sort of what that new process would look like?
All right, yeah, um, we identified that certificates of survey just didn't have a lot of public process, and most of the public process came afterwards. In this appeal process, so when we made the changes. Um, in order to divide your land below one dwelling unit for twenty acres, your first step is to rezon. And so that goes through a public process, um, it goes through a lot of different criteria, you know, the staff reviews it, it goes to the planning commission, and then you finally. Have the final say on the rezoning. Um, and that way, if it's rezoned, then it could go through the certificate of survey, that's still administrative. They could still have up to four RDPs, it could still have a cross access easement. So the rezoning, the impact on the certificate of survey would be that it definitely could not have the five. If you wanted five, then he would have to plat and put in a public road. So I think the primary change would be perhaps he couldn't even do a certificate of survey if the rezoning's not approved. And if you think this is an appropriate place for residential, it's it's hard to pre-approve rezoning, so I don't know which way you'd want to go.
Um, just one final point to that is. Um, outside of the homestead survey, under the current regulations, which are the new regulations today, he has over twenty acres. And he has over three acres outside of the floodplain, so he would be vested for one residential building permit on that leftover piece. Under the current regulations without having to go through a rezon process. That may make your head spin even more.
So I guess my question to Mr. Fennello is this, how committed are you? To dividing up that property into five different residences? Are you committed enough to take that through the public process?
I. I mean, I. I've done everything that they've asked me, you know, I've I've got in. Submitted my permit before. You know, before the deadline, I was told, so I'm here, and now I'm, I it sounds like we're trying to push it on. To, you know, the new rules and stuff, I just, I'm just so lost right now, you know, I'm just trying. I try to follow everything that you guys tell me, the commissioners, the city, the county, and I'm. I just don't, I just don't understand, I guess, I just. I don't even know what a landowner means in Douglas County anymore. Apparently, you can't, you follow the rules and you still don't get what. What's supposed to happen, so I don't know. I would like it to be rural residential zoning or have plots and. You know, as long as I follow the guidelines of what, you know, the county says, you know, minimum three acres on that, I don't know why. Why it's a big, I don't know. I thought this was a happy medium, but I don't know. I feel defeated, I guess you'd say.
But I I I personally feel, you know, a little bit of frustration here because. Nobody ever in the process basically said that the planning director was wrong. But apparently, this is the only way that Mr. Fennello could get this back before us or get this moved forward, so. This was the avenue that he took, so. Is that what I'm hearing? Is that this is how he was advised to address this? And now we're all sitting here saying.
At the joint meeting, I recall, one of the commissioners said they were disappointed that we hadn't gone ahead with the certificate of survey, denied it and brought it to you for an appeal. And so based on that, it seemed like that was the direction he was being given, that that was an avenue. You know, we suggested perhaps amending the comp plan at the time, and I understand why you didn't want to, because Plan 2040. I don't even think it was adopted yet, so who wants to amend something then? You know, you thought maybe changes would be happening as the adults of Plan 2040.
Okay, so I sort of, go ahead, Michelle.
Well, no, I just gonna say, I, you know, I I do remember now there was some question about. The options he was given at that time, and we were unhappy that it wasn't brought to us, it was assumed that we were going to deny it. So in that aspect, I think we all thought that. It wasn't quite, I don't know, the correct avenue, I. We weren't comfortable with it, so what I'm having a hard time with now is that, once again, he's done what he's supposed to do, and here we are saying. Now, we have more hoops to jump through, so. I just want to figure out and would like, I know Mary said a couple months, but. How how do we get this resolved for somebody that's trying to do what they're supposed to do and? You know. I I look at this process and I see that there are issues with this process that need to be resolved.
And Sarah, I did on this, but I don't know if you could. Could say that you feel the land use plan is wrong, so the planning director didn't didn't appeal, but you know, you don't think. Industrial is the appropriate use in this area, and then along with upholding the appeal, you also initiate the amendments, and both things are happening at once. That may be a happy medium. If the amendment doesn't get approved and you kind of have a use that's out of compliance, but. That'd be one way to move forward, if I don't really know about the process, I'm not a long range planner, but that seems like an avenue you can take.
Okay, so we could say that we think that the plan was wrong and uphold the appeal and work on changing the land use.
But in the meantime, his. His certificate of survey would.
Didn't hear you.
So if if they did not, if they uh overturned the planning commission or the planning director's decision. Then he would be allowed to. Put the five houses in, I'll just say it that way.
Right, four or five, whatever would fit, yeah.
And and I I I want to clarify, and it's been a while since I've looked at this packet. My, I thought, Mary, can you, when this first came to us with the um. Storage, it was approved by the planning commission, correct, and we had a valid protest petition, or am I wrong? No.
They they didn't approve it, there was so much public comment that they were split, and so they voted both to approve and deny, it was five, five each time, so you didn't have a recommendation.
Okay, that's it, all right.
So, I would say this, I I want to, I. I agree with Commissioner Darius so that we want Mr. Fennello to stop jumping through hoops. But I think it would be unfair to say. That he's done everything he was supposed to do. First, he purchased a piece of property that was zoned in a way. That he could not use it the way he wanted. Um, he did a CUP. Which would have allowed him to do something, but we didn't feel like that those conditions met. The 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 use of the area, which is fair, that's one reason it was zoned the way it was. You know, not every CUP we consider, we think actually meets the needs of that community. So while I'm somewhat sympathetic with the with the route that you've gone down, Mr. Fennello, I also want to honor the fact that we have. Processes in place to ensure the zoning. Um, and and that's why CUPs are there, it's it's sort of a way to say, hey, I think I've got an idea that I think might work here. You know, so I I don't, I don't totally see the the applicant as a victim in this in this scenario here. You're trying to do something fairly unique in an area that is not currently zoned to do that. Um, what we're trying to do is work through a comprehensive plan change and new certificate of survey changes. That has been layered on top of this discussion. Um, my feeling right now is I'm leaning towards making a motion to defer his certificate of survey. And that way, he won't have to do all the, you know, start all over again. Some of the neighbors may not be happy that that we're looking at another plan coming back to us that was essentially made it in under the wire. For the old process, um, and I understand that. Um, at the same time, I think we don't think that the zoning matches. The use of that area, so I think, to me, this is the definition of compromise, no one is happy, so um. I guess that's. Uh, and I'll just go ahead and make that motion to defer. This appeal. For the administrative denial of the certificate of survey.
Did you want to include a motion about the comp plan amendment with that?
I I was gonna do that second, Mary, but if you think I should attach it. To it, I. If that's helpful to you, I don't know.
It might be good to give it some timeframe to why you're deferring it.
Okay. Um, and so we would defer it until. We have a comprehensive plan amendment for for the property. Hope that's helpful. Commissioner Thelman's out, she just can't take it anymore. There she is, she's back. Okay, for those of you watching at home, we've lost one of our commissioners here.
He has left the building.
But she'll be back in just a minute, I'm sure.
She has texted me that she's working on it.
Okay, that's great, thanks. Really quite amazed we haven't had more problems like this, where we get bounced off or things like that, so.
Let me. I'm not sure, I'm gonna put you on here and see if everyone can hear you, I'm not sure everyone can hear you. Yeah. It's, it's um. Okay, sure, um, all right, I'll let you go. She's gonna need a few minutes to try to make sure, there's something happened with the internet at her house, so she's gonna. Need a few minutes to make sure she can get back in.
Do we want to recess for five minutes, maybe? Would that be good?
That would be great.
Yeah, so we have enough that we can vote on that, I'll motion for a recess for five minutes. Back at seven, ten, all those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, we'll resume here in seven, ten.
So did you guys solve the problem while I was gone? No?
We, we said we were gonna take a small recess, so I think it looks like Patrick's coming back here now.
Welcome back, Commissioner Thelman. Okay. We're back and say, this is hard. This is, let's just take a minute and extend massive grace to everybody for working through this. This is, this is art on all of us. It's not what we're used to, so thank you, everybody, for hanging in there. Props to Chad and Tanya for the best background I've seen in a long time. That is awesome. Yeah, that's so cool. Okay, I wanna make sure Mr. Fennello is back joining us as we continue to have this discussion. There he is. Awesome. Okay, so Commissioner Thelman, well, you look like you were maybe wanting to make a comment as we lost you there. You're on mute. You're on mute.
As, at this point, especially with that technological issue, which I still can't explain, would you repeat the motion that you are?
Yeah, be happy to. So I-
We're going to make-
Yeah, so I made a motion to defer the appeal of the administrative denial of the certificate of survey and until we have a comprehensive plan amendment for this specific parcel from, from, through, that goes through the planning commission. Mary, did I get everything that you might need there? Yeah, she's muted, but she's giving me the head nod, which tells me, yes, that's.
And with, so thanks, that's helpful. And with that process, then, that would go through the planning commission for their review? And then if it passes them, then it would come to us for a full, for the, for the current process under the new regulations, right?
No, that would be under the old regulations.
Under the old regulations, okay. But it would have the the proper zoning underneath it?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanna say something on the zoning, you know, the intent is for everybody to rezone, but we have a few things that are in the works that, for instance, this certificate of survey, and I believe I have one other, that when they're finished, will adjust the zoning because they were submitted before it was necessary to zone. So once, once, if it gets approved and recorded, then it'll be rezoned to the CP district, so it doesn't do the zoning first, but will automatically rezone it afterwards.
So, I just wanna make sure you understand, are we just trying to change the land use for this particular parcel?
Yes, that's my understanding. It's just for this particular parcel. I think we've communicated to Mary that we'd like to have a work session on the K-10 corridor.
Okay, in, in changing the land use, I know it has to go to the planning commission. Does this have to go before also the Lawrence City Commission?
No, they've changed that. If it only affects county properties, it normally just comes straight to you, so it'll just come to you with the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
That way you're not considering things that don't really affect your area. You may wanna consider just doing the whole northwest corner, because in a long-range plan, it wouldn't make sense to make this residential and the little piece is just to the north of it. I think there may be some, so I would just call it the whole northwest corner there. You know, look at that.
Sure, I'll amend my motion to include the northwest corner. You're on mute there, Nancy.
So one more question on, on process. This way, this would go text amendment to change the plan in that corner to red, to include residential zoning. It would go through the planning commission and any of these questions of the, making sure the flood plan is flooding and the number of parcels and all of that, that the, that 28 acres can contain safely in terms of the watershed and all of that. All of that would be under review of the planning commission, so it would have some more scrutiny, more than what we can give it tonight, right?
Actually, the certificate of survey itself won't go to the planning commission, but when they look at that area to see if it should be residential, they could look at flood plan, whether they think it'd be better to be residential or office. So yeah, with your direction, they could take a special look at the flood plan.
Okay.
Mary, would they, I mean, I guess we have two different Ag 1 and Ag 2 now that would, that would weigh in on what would be allowed there, correct? Maybe Tanya wants, I don't know.
You mean in the long-range plan?
Well, if we're looking at rezoning, we don't have an A-zone anymore. We have A-1 and A-2, right?
Yeah, we wouldn't be looking at rezoning. You would be looking at changing the recommendation in the long-range plan to allow low-density residential. And then his certificate of survey could continue. And when that's done, then it would be rezoned. Planning would just go ahead and take care of the rezoning to cluster preservation, because that's, that's where it would need to be rezoned if it was under the current code.
Thank you. You explained that earlier. I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't quite grasp, but now I think I understand.
And I guess, and we can, I know we're working on a second on that motion.
Yes, I'm waiting for that.
Yeah. So I'll give you a second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Mr. Fennello, I know this has been an exhausting process for you. Do you have any questions before we go to our next agenda item on what just happened?
Yes, I do. For future reference from the three commissioners here, I mean, I am an entrepreneur, small business, so I don't, I'm sure we'll see each other again sometime in the future, but I was just curious, curious based on your guys' recommendation how to perceive future land use. Is that gospel for now on? Or is there someone in particular to talk about in the future of purchasing land in other areas, how to, how to move forward? I just, I didn't know if you guys can maybe give me some kind of clarification for future of it.
So I would expect that we aren't gonna give you much clarification. We're gonna defer, ask you to visit with Mary and Tanya about future land purchases and what, what the zoning, what the regulations are, those types of things. This is confusing to work through. It's hard. When it comes to us, it's really about value judgments and things like that, but they can give you sort of more of the technical expertise on what's allowed here and what's not allowed there and what, what,
Okay.
what steps you might take. It, it is, it can be frustrating. We know that and we appreciate your patience as we work through these things. We're trying to get you caught up on just what some of us have had years of work and doing all these-
No, yeah, I understand. I know it's tough, for sure. So were you guys all part of the 2040 plan? Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, we are. We voted on that and approved that.
Okay. Okay, well, I think that's, that's all I got.
All right, super. Oh, Sarah?
One, so there was some conversation about a work session talking about this core, the, this intersection in the northwest. Do we wanna do that before this goes to planning commission? I, I think, no. I, I, thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to our next item on our agenda, which is the consideration of a conditional use permit for 200009 for Willow Springs Fire District Number 3 on US Highway 56, North 300 Road and East 1,100 Road, or 1100 Road, as we call it here in the United States. Mary, I think this is you again. And if you're talking, you're on mute.
Mary Miller Planner, and this is a certificate of survey for a fire district building. Find the share screen. Here we go. This is what? Okay. So the use is considered a public or government building. It requires a conditional use permit. It's on approximately five acres at the northeast corner of US Highway 56, or like you said, North 300 Road and East 1100 Road. This is the location here, just west of the junction there, 5956 Junction. And the plan is to move the fire station from the Willow Springs Township building. They share this facility now with the road crew just to move them to the east across the road and to build a dedicated building. And Willow Springs Fire District Number 3 serves Willow Springs as well as a part of Marion Township. So this building will be larger and it will allow them room to grow in the future if they need to and also provide more room for their trainings. So they think it will increase the efficiency of their service. This is the site plan that's being looked at. They actually provided one with a few minor changes. The septic system was moved behind the building and the propane tank was moved up here. That may be the one they go with, but those minor changes, you know, they can be at either location without a problem. When this went to the planning commission, they had just heard from their water district, they determined their water line was in on their property, so the building and the parking lot had to move to the east, about 25 feet. So one of the conditions the planning commission put on the recommendation was that they would provide this revised plan for you showing the relocation of the building. So this shows where the building would be. And they'll be using a shared parking lot. Right now, there is a parking lot on the property that they share with the township. The township uses it for election day parking and whenever they have overflow, if they have township meetings. So this parking lot will serve two purposes. And they'll also be able to have overflow parking behind the building if they have regional trainings where they need additional parking. And it'll have the one access point. The fire trucks will go into the south of the building and then there'll be employee entrance on the west side. So with conditional use permits, we look at zoning and land uses in the area. It's zone Ag 1 and Ag 2. Ag 2 is the yellow. Most of that is developed with residential, large lot residential uses. And the rest is agricultural. Just moving the fire district across the road, it should still be compatible with the land uses and zonings in the area. And the the increased efficiency of the fire district would probably just enhance the area. One of the principal factors we look with anytime there's a conditional use is what would the detrimental effect be on nearby property? And with the fire district, the noise of the trucks and that kind of activity would usually be one of the principal impacts, but it's already in the area. So the other impacts could be with that parking lot, you know, the light shining out of it. We have a residence just to the west. We have a residence to the north. And they do show on their plan some landscape screening on the west side of the parking lot and some buffering screening on the north side, just to buffer it from those residences. And they don't have their lighting fixtures selected yet. So one of the conditions, actually the only other condition on the CP, is that they'll provide planning with their lighting fixtures, so we can ensure they'll be pointed downward and they won't create glare or off-site trespass. Other than that, there should be no detrimental impacts with this use. The staff report pretty much discusses the various other golden factors. If it was denied, they'd have to move elsewhere. They wouldn't be able to share the combined parking lot. And the property is suitable for uses allowed in the Ag 2 district. It's five acres. It'd be suitable for residents, but it's also pretty suitable for this facility, especially considering the township is just to the west. The township building. And so the planning commission voted unanimously. There was one abstention, because one of the commissioners does work with fire, the fire district, to forward the CP to you with a recommendation for approval subject to that condition about the lighting fixture and then that additional condition about the revised plan. And so I know the applicant is here today. If you have questions for him or if he wants to speak.
Thank you, Mary. Hi Clint, I'm assuming you're here for Willow Township Fire Department. Do you have any comments to share?
I really don't have any comment. I think Mary and their staff's done a good job of compiling what we're trying to do and yeah, I guess if you guys have any questions, and I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I think it speaks for itself, so.
Great. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Commissioners, any questions for Mary or Clint?
No, I don't have any.
Sarah, any public comment there at the courthouse?
No, we don't have any. Thank you.
Should've checked in before we did the last one. I'd hate to think that they were sitting there through all this. Jill, any public comment online? Not hearing from Jill, and I don't see any of the attendees raising their hands, so.
I didn't see anything. I'm sorry.
Okay, great, thanks, Jill. Okay, back up to the commission for motions, discussions, votes, not necessarily in that order.
I think it, I mean, it's like Clint said, it's pretty self-evident. It seems like a good improvement for the community and it's important to have a facility that works well for the fire district and for the township as well, so I, I'm happy to support it.
Sorry, I don't have any questions. I, yeah, I think it's, as, you know, it speaks for itself, as Clint said.
I'm, I'm happy to go ahead and make a motion if we're ready. Okay. I move to approve the conditional use permit, CUP 20-00009 for a public or government building based on the findings noted in the staff report and subject to the conditions as recommended by the Lawrence Douglas County Planning Commission.
Second?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, thanks Clint for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
All right, that ends our regular agenda items. Now we open it up for general public comment. Checking in with Sarah.
Got no one here. Thank you.
There. Oh, we do have some public comment. Looks like Jill from Larry Bart's.
Yep, Larry, you're able to talk now.
Larry, go ahead and unmute your microphone there.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I, I wanna make sure that you guys understand that we're not trying to be difficult about this whole thing and, and you know, I would like to see him do something over there. And, you know, I just, I appreciate all your patience and working with it and all that stuff, so I just wanted to hang in here and tell you all that. Yeah, the only other thing that I have is getting close to fireworks season. And we're having, we're having a dilemma of whether we're gonna be able to sell fireworks or not. So I just wanted to put that in your mind. You know, be thinking about it, because we're gonna have to make a decision here pretty quick. So I just wanted to put that in your mind, you know, be thinking about it because we're going to have to make a decision here pretty quick. So I'm, I'm assuming that we're going to go ahead and do it. And we're going to do the safe thing and do six-foot and all that kind of thing. But we've already got mass ordered and, you know, got all the stuff, all the PPE done and, and ready to go. So we'll do whatever's, you know, required of us by the health department. So anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate all you guys do. I know it's a thank, thankless job and I do appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks Larry, appreciate the public comment. Any other public comment? Okay, it doesn't look like it, so we'll bring it back up to the commission. We have commissioner and administrator miscellaneous, and we usually start this with Sarah.
Thanks commissioners. In your packet, I uploaded a weekly, weekly memo to your packet. This is Bart's, my first weekly memo in a couple of weeks. And that is largely because we've got Daviana Humboldt back in the office helping me make sure I can get that done. So I want to point out in that plan, in that packet, there's some, some great information about some of the sustainability work that Jasmine's team, Jasmine's team's been doing and some of the regional work on the Climate Action Plan. So we're going to be helping to promote that with our efforts. But I would just ask, you know, encourage commissioners to read over that, to talk about how we are partnering to work on the Climate Action Plan, Climate Action KC Plan. And just as a reminder, we did cancel the judges lunch that was for this Friday. I talked to the judges and, but we were hoping to be back on for August. So that is still on our calendars and hopefully we can do that. Just a few things in terms of COVID-19 planning and recovery efforts. The Unified Command is, spent the last week talking through the, how our plans would coincide with the governor's reopening plan. We will continue to monitor that situation, monitoring numbers. And we have a meeting next week to talk about how we plan for the end of Phase 1. One of the things before our Unified Command is a structure to talk about COVID recovery efforts. And we've got a lot of excitement about how we can get, move forward with recovery efforts and what different sectors of our community want to be engaged in that effort. So I'll try to, as soon as we get a template to put forward, I'll be definitely talking to the commission about that effort and how we move forward. In terms of housing and human services, I, I think you're going to see from me in the next few weeks on an agenda, some proposals related to our housing and human service area responses to COVID-19. You know, I think we've, we're learning more and more about how state and federal funding is coming to our community for COVID-19 response. And I, I think it's important that we kind of talk about what that process is. I mean, to date, our community has not, so the city of Lawrence or Douglas County has not received, has not received a penny of, of funding from the state or federal government for COVID-19 planning. As the commission is well aware, normally most of these responses happen through FEMA, which is all reimbursement-based. So, and we all know that pretty well from our tornado about a year ago and in which Douglas County still has not been reimbursed for FEMA, from FEMA for, for the tornado. And so we, the other methods that come to us in terms of reimbursement would be, that come to the community would come in terms of Community Development Block Grants and emergency shelter grants. And those are, would go to the city of Lawrence. So we've been partnering closely with the city of Lawrence on how those funds could be allocated and used to best serve this health, the housing and human services area. So those would be some of the recommendations we would bring forward to you and talk through that. I would say that, you know, there's some great things that, that those funds are going to be able to funnel or fund in our community, but there are some things they're not going to fund. And, and that's where some of my concern lies. And, and, and that's where you'll see those requests, hopefully within a week or so, that we would bring before the commission. But I, I just think it's important to be transparent about the source of funding and where we're at. So I don't, does the commission have any questions for me in terms of updates on what we're looking to do?
I don't.
Well, I, yeah, I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate it, thank you.
Commissioners, any miscellaneous items?
I don't have anything.
I was just wondering on, we got an email from the stepping up folks, the meeting, a quarterly call on May 13th. Is there any problem? I, I'd be interested in being, just observing that. Is there, is it okay for two commissioners to to listen in on that? Or can we publish that?
We can, we can add that to our calendar. And I did want to note that I do believe next week is a potential that we'll have two commissioners on the superintendent's. So I will have Robin add that to our calendar as well.
Okay. My, my only other comment before we end is just to apologize again for the technical issues I'm having. I really, I ironically have not had these issues with any other Zoom groups I'm having to meet on. So wouldn't you know, this would be it. But I'm, I'll think, I'll think about tonight and try to figure out what, what went wrong. But I do apologize for the two episodes I put you through.
No problem. I, you know, the only thing I would add is, is I appreciate Sarah, all the updates you're giving us from Unified Command. This was a busy two weeks for Unified Command and hearing from the governor and having to respond. And I, I know that we've been listening to other counties as well and, and trying to work with them. That turned out not to be as necessary as we thought it might be. So I don't know if everybody always understands all the things we're planning for that sometimes we don't need to enact because something else happens. But just, Sarah, thank you for all the work you're doing with Unified Command and that your whole staff is doing. I know that some staff have come back to the building this week. And it's exciting to see some things lightly get back to normal, so.
Yeah, in terms of normal, we're in, I'm officially, I think, almost done with reviewing outside partner agency budgets and had my first departmental budget review today. So that process is very different than it was last year with all of us mostly over calls and reviewing it electronically. So I have to say, it's not as much fun, but, but we're making it work.
Any other comment from the commission before we adjourn? Okay, super. Thank you very much, everybody, we are adjourned.